I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And that, I think, is at the heart of this posse piece, and why I, you know, I think Mr. Pius and others who've been involved in this is this is real two-way communication from school to parent. Not the principal's letter, which is coming from Bob and I, going direct, and providing parents with good information, but not a venue to respond. This is two-way communication. This is what Department of Education and folks, what we're trying to do with our teachers and our staff on a regular basis to engage families in our schools. So that's what's happening with it.
Their feedback and.
And follow-up.
Yes, Mr. Watson, I noticed that on some of the folks from the parents, they had done in languages other than English. Is this automatic? Is this a program automatically translated?
Yes, the program, the program does send out in the family's home language. So as part of our messenger system, which connects with our X2, you may have heard Mr. Angelo over time talk about the home language surveys that we do for incoming freshmen, when parents denote what their primary language is at home, Spanish, Portuguese, or any other language. Documents that are sent from the school to families are communicated in the family's primary home language, including this document here.
Any questions from the board?
Are there any languages that are not, that we have, or we're not able to provide?
No, we're aware of.
Thank you.
Again, I think I just stressed that point, and that's what's important with families who have multiple languages, is they often feel disconnected from the school system because, not because they don't want to participate in the school system, but they lack the ability to communicate effectively in English. So that responsibility is on us to make sure that we are communicating with those families in a language that connects with them at home. And so these programs, and again, Helder's done a great job with the home language surveys and Masial with the messenger system, but this is a really good positive step for the school that we can connect with families in their language and answer their questions.
Anything else from anyone? Your motion to accept and place on file? All of them tagged up, please signify. Any opposed? Hearing none opposed, so moved.
Item six C, FMX Technology, done by Masial Pius? Thank you, Mr. Derrigan. In regards to IT, the last couple of months, it's definitely been a busy time for our department. I've shared a report through our new FMX system, highlighting the work that's been accomplished by our IT staff. So dated it August 17, which was the week before things really picked up. Teachers started coming back, prepping for their, in their classrooms. And we received since then, as of today, 1,251 requests, technology requests. We have completed 1,001 requests. That leaves us with a couple hundred more to go. When we first started with the FMX system, we had about 150 requests that were carried over from the old-school duty request system. So we're pretty much, we're pretty close to where we were before the reopening of school. So we've been faced with a lot of challenges. Our department has not only supported teachers, students, but we're also in contact with parents. Parents are contacting us for support, and each one of us in our department is really stepping up with all this COVID and the technology that's been asked of us. Technology really had to improve, which we have. We're also forced to move 10 years ahead with technology. It's really been, I'm glad I've been a part of it, and I'm really glad that I have the team that I have because none of this would have happened without them, and I'll mention their names afterward. But, you know, in the report, you'll see that there's numbers of how many people need a what ticket. It's really not the numbers regarding who did what. It's been a team effort with the, with the requests. And also keep in mind, we're quarantined at some point as well. So, you know, the school was functioning without the IT department, and we did what we could from home as well during quarantine. There is a chart that shows you how many work requests were submitted. As you can see, in September, it was 631 requests. So in August, we went from 277 to 631 requests. We were scrambling. We were running around. We were doing Chromebooks to students. We issued Chromebooks to all freshmen, and then we were waiting for the orders to come in. Everything, technology was backordered, software, hardware was all backordered, and there was huge delay. Perfect world, everyone had everything ready for the end of August. Because of the delays in amount of requests that all other school districts were putting out there, also we had to wait. We received all the laptops and Chromebooks. Some of the initiatives that we've accomplished since August were workgroup printers. We have about 300 individual printers in our building. Printers in our, in the IT budget is the largest line number that we have. And to manage all 300 printers, you would need one person to literally just work on printers every day, all day. So I did my research a few months ago, and not a few months ago, but around December of 2019, reached out to other colleges and universities, other school districts. What are they doing with their printing situation? So what a lot of the schools are doing are, they have workgroup. And instead of having it printed in every classroom, they're scattered around the building. Students either type in their ID, and in this school, they'll do the same thing, and teachers will scan their ID, and all their print jobs that they select, print out. They have the option of punching holes in them, stapling them together. They also have the option of scanning documents, a stack of documents at a time if they'd like, directly to their email. So it's, again, it's improving the productivity with, with printing, scanning. And, you know, that's, it's going to save the district, you know, funding as well towards, you know, at the end of the fiscal year.
I'm going to get located in the.
Great question. So we have nine of them installed. We have seven more installed in the next few weeks. We already have them networked. We just need them to install power for those printers. Right now, all the academic wing is ready to go, and we're starting to branch over to the vocational side as well. We're strategically placing these printers, you know, in areas that teachers can share it, students can access it, because, again, in the springtime, there wasn't much printing going on during remote learning. With hybrid, you know, you know, same thing, there's a dramatic decrease in printing. And granted, some shop areas will have their printers, visual, media, IT, business. Shops that require that printing capability, we're not taking away printers. Again, with technology, we're not making things difficult for teachers or students. We're always trying to improve technology and how the teaching and learning happens in the classroom. I mentioned the Chromebooks. We just received an additional 650 Chromebooks. The goal is to go one-to-one Chromebooks, and that will happen this school year. My team is, is working on the Chromebooks, and we're going to give it out to the sophomores. That's the next class. So that will leave us with the juniors and seniors if we get the finals, final batch. Teachers and teacher assistants, they've all been issued a school laptop. So this gives them mobility, allows them to take a laptop, you know, during prep, go to the cafeteria, future lounge, whatever the case may be. They can take the laptops home. They can do work from home, whatever, whatever they decide to do. It gives them a lot of mobility now. And also, these laptops are new ones, so they fold over and act like a tablet. So teachers who are working remotely, instead of standing in front of a whiteboard, they literally just sit down with their tablet, and they can start writing out their problems or notes, or whatever the case may be. This allows the student to actually see better what's, you know, what's being written by the teacher. We just received hover cams. Again, there was a huge shortage with these hover cams. It's another, it's a special document camera that actually flips over. So, you know, an electrical, they can zoom in to what's being done with the teacher's hands. Or you can flip it. Teacher in automotive can show students how to, you know, change a tire, or whatever the case may be. So we just started handing those out this week. The phone system, the phone system, again, was a huge undertaking. The phone company gave us full control of the phone system as of October 1. We'll witness from August to October, the phone system, the phone company established and activated 200 phones. Since we've taken over the phone system, we've activated 150 phones. So we're definitely heading in the right direction. I would say about 90% to 95% of the phones are active, and we're going to just tweak the system. We're in good shape with the phone system. Another project was the Wi-Fi project, the indoor Wi-Fi project. We put that on hold because of the school reopening, but we're going to pick up where we left off. So right now, the way the Wi-Fi is set up, it can handle all the laptops that we've handed out to teachers and teachers assistants, the freshmen that are in the building, and we can handle sophomores, juniors, and seniors when they come in. Also, keep in mind, when they do come in at full capacity, that we've also upgraded our outside connection into the building. So since 2018, 2019, we've increased our internet speeds by 600%. So we're not planning for today. We're really planning for the future with all this technology that we've implemented in the building in the last year.
So in Lehman's term, when we used to focus five and a half years ago, the pipe was not big enough. He is, with his team, did appropriate planning for the future where that service and that internet connectivity is 600% more than what it was. So I say kudos to that point, Masial.
It's definitely been a team effort, for sure. I just wanted to thank the team. I have Ben Lanchet, who's a part-time help, Vanessa Cardozo, Patrick Crudo, Alima, Joshua Pena, Jay Viera, and Donna LeBret. Without those individuals, this school wouldn't be where it is today. We've had some good days. We've had some difficult days. But again, today is better than yesterday, and tomorrow's going to be better than today.
Excellent. Does anyone on the board have any questions of Mr. Pius?
The Chair, Mike Day. Again, excellent report, as always. And early in the year, we knew backlogs were a big thing, every school system. You couldn't get it because even if you ordered last March, it was backlog. And I have school community members heard some things about not being able to have everything they needed to teach their class, but, and I know some things are still coming in. And I haven't heard a word for months, so that's good news. Are the teachers all set in a sense of what they need is online?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. We, we ended up getting the laptops early on. There were, there was a couple of weeks. It was about two to three weeks where, you know, the desktops that they currently had that were purchased three, four years ago did not have cameras, did not have microphones. So yes, that was a challenge, but those, you know, thanks to Pam Stewart, who, who, you know, got the ball rolling quickly to order these laptops through grants, we were able to get them two to three weeks. But that first week of school, that's when we started getting our orders of laptops. Again, these were ordered really early on, first opportunity. And the laptops really was an initiative that was planned already to move forward. But those, you know, thanks to Pam Stewart, who, you know, got the ball rolling quickly to order these laptops through grants, we were able to get them two to three weeks. That first week of school, that's when we started getting our orders of laptops. Again, these were ordered really early on, first opportunity. And the laptops really was an initiative that was planned already to move forward, you know, to give teachers these laptops. But with everything that happened, we really had to, you know, move it forward a lot sooner than I expected.
Thank you. And I want to mention, because I think if people are listening, they forget, we all forget sometimes after what was said, but we all knew why, knew it was coming. Now it seems like we're here. So as we mentioned to everybody back then, get deep breath because it's going to happen. So I appreciate your work and your team. Good job.
Thank you. And I mean, teachers are, you know, they're doing what they can to provide students with the best teaching experience. And I wanted to make sure that technology wasn't an issue, but unfortunately, because of the backlog, you know, they were patient and they're where they should be. And again, tomorrow's going to be a better day. As time goes on, we'll continue supporting teachers to help students. Are there any other questions?
Mr. Watt, come here.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, Mr. Pyres and Pam won't take enough credit for this and they pushed this ball forward. The COVID pandemic definitely impacted us all. We tried to do whole improvement and all these other things and it impacted schools in getting technology. But this plan was in place last spring, impacted by the pandemic. We are in a much better place. Of course, it was frustrating to not have that stuff on day one of the school year. We were as frustrated as anybody else was. We understand why we were frustrated. But I just want the committee to know, it was not because of a lack of effort by these two folks who took this ball in the spring, ran with it. And we are where we are today because of that commitment. So that's all I want to add.
The chairman, may I add, I also, with every and all new technology, you're always mindful of support, support, support. And with a lot of the staff, with new technology comes anxiety. And with that anxiety, we, that's where Masial and his team, in the effort to help the Angelo, which we're trying to provide the appropriate professional development for all staff. As he did last year, he has Tech Tuesdays and he has professional development time for any technology needs, all the staff. I know they unveiled the hover cams to the vocational teachers today. And the vocational teachers, some who are more stronger with technology are assisting within their own departments. I don't know if you want to speak on that piece, but with every new piece of technology, we have to provide that learning, not only to the students, but also the teachers.
Right, right. That's always been a goal of ours is really, you know, we can't push technology without the training. So the hover cams would have been arrived, we received them early on and we had a PD ready for them, but unfortunately, they were delayed. So we do have Tech Tuesdays and that's the opportunity where teachers can just have one-on-one help with one of us on the team. And I've also reached out during meetings in different departments that if they need help, just reach out, email, call one of us and we'll make that happen.
Excellent report, Mr. Masial. And thank to you and to Pam Stewart for that. I hear a motion to accept and place on file, Mr. Pyres' report.
Accept.
Second?
Check. Okay.
Are they saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Do we need to poll?
Sure.
We're going to 6D, which is an update on the edgenuity, which is going to be by Mr. Watt, I believe, Mr. Pyres. Dan. Where is, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I don't know who wants to take it first, but this is something that we offered our students when they decided to go fully remote. It's a completely remote program that's sponsored by the Department of Education and they're one of the only ones that have a vocational component to it. It was pretty much the only online thing that we could use to address the needs of our students at this time. Angelo and I have worked pretty much all day on this sometimes, but it's working out okay. Angelo?
As you may recall, during one of our previous meetings, we shared some of the information from Edgenuity, I believe in your packet. We shared a couple more documents with you, which have specific courses that are available through Edgenuity. And from the beginning of the school year, even before the building opened up, we started to hear from a lot of parents and a lot of students that they were hesitant in coming into the, into the building. There was Zoom meetings with the Department of Ed where they introduced us to some of these companies that would be able to offer courses, fully remote, to students. We had a survey that went out and then from that survey, between the academy administrators, guidance counselors, Mr. Watt, myself, we placed phone calls to every parent who had a concern about their child coming into the building, were requesting to go full remote. Then Mr. Brian made some personal calls to parents and explained to them what the scenario was going to be in the building. We obviously want kids in the building to have their, you know, their full experience, particularly in the shop area, is on.
When we set up the spreadsheet, we allowed the academy administrators with all the teachers, the lead teachers, to figure out what programs would work the best for their areas, so we get their buy-in for their areas also. And then we developed the spreadsheet.
We developed a spreadsheet, a Google sheet. We listed every child on there and then, again, phone calls were made, second phone calls, and explained to parents and to students that were asking about going full remote or shop, as to what their experience would be like. Many of those parents, many of those students since changed their mind and decided to come into the building. But as of this morning, we have a total of 101 students that have selected to go full remote. As you know, for their academics, we are delivering remote classrooms with our teachers. When a student, a parent requests to go full remote for shop, Mr. Watt, myself, will have a conversation with those parents and/or with a student and explain to them how the program will work. Those students that signed on early on to go fully remote, we assigned two courses to each of those students that best aligned to their shop area, again, in conjunction with the academy administrator and with the teacher. And since then, there have been 13 additional students since that early onslaught that, for whatever reasons, have requested to go full remote. Many of those reasons are either a family member who has immune compromise, a family member who has an illness, and the parents, the families are concerned, so they've asked to go fully remote. So as of today, as of this morning, there are 101 students that are taking their remote experience through Edgenuity. We further broke it down by grade level. Of those 101 students, 10 of them are grade nine students. So they're doing their exploratory, if you will, through Edgenuity. There are 29 in 10 students, 28 grade 11, and 34 grade 12. We also further broke it down by the individual shop area and you'll see that noted next to each of the shop codes, next to the shop title, the number of students that are actually taking their full remote shop experience through Edgenuity.
Any questions for Mr. Angelo or Mr. Watt?
Yes. For you, Mr. Chair. I noticed a number of them over here, like dental, it's just the electrical, fashion design, they don't have any students. Is that because they don't have any programs, offerings in those areas?
Not necessarily. I think, I think basically they, they didn't choose to go remote learning, they didn't really, they wouldn't know the offerings for it at the time until they contact us. So the students are actually going to school. It's funny how that does work. Electrical certainly has a strong support system. I'm sure their teachers have been talking it up and keeping them in the building.
And some of the conversations that Mr. Watt and I had with parents, for example, I do remember a call coming in from a parent of a student that's in electrical shop. And one of the things I explained to that particular mom was, listen, I'm going to ask you a question at the end and if you tell me that the answer is yes, your child will go fully remote and we'll respect that. I will let you know what courses, you know, your child will be taking. But obviously, the experience of taking your shop through Edgenuity is not the same experience as a hands-on experience in electrical. We're not going to ask your child to take apart an electrical outlet and put it back in your house and video tape before. And she started to laugh, I said, I would hope not. So after having those conversations with, you know, with many of those parents, they said, okay, we're going to send, I'll send my child in to experience those three days face-to-face. If I'm uncomfortable, can I call you back? The answer is yes. And since then, many of those parents have said no, we're comfortable with our kids coming in. And that's why you'll notice that there are many shops that have no numbers next to them and that's because there have been no requests from students from those shops to go full remote.
Mrs. Ribeiro?
Just a question on the ninth grade is exploratory. How does that work? Are they only, there's two courses or?
Correct. So they actually, we assigned them a course by the title of Career Explorations A and Career Explorations B. Each of those courses will take students through different opportunities in the different shops, different jobs to make them, make them out of it. You go into something like nursing, here are some of the opportunities that would be at the end of this career and so forth. Again, it is not that hands-on experience that a student go through exploratory would have here. It's more of an online, you're listening to a video, answering questions and so forth.
Have you gotten any feedback?
We received some feedback. Some of the feedback is that some students are finding it very difficult because, again, they're pretty much, I don't want to say on their own, but it's on the screen, they're finding it difficult. Some of the assignments, they say, are pretty extensive. Others are actually breezing through it. So the feedback we're getting is varied from student to student and so forth. We do have, we've added a staff member to keep in contact with these students. Ms. Jen Carrero, who's a CDT teacher in business tech, has created Google classrooms, one for each of the different divisions, so that students can log on, ask her questions in addition to the Edgenuity instructors. It's also a way for her to contact the student if we have a concern because we can monitor all their grades, we can monitor when they log on, when they don't log on, how long they're logged on for and so forth. Every student's guidance counselor also has access. So anytime I receive an email that says, you know, Johnny's falling behind, the guidance counselor gets an email, Ms. Carrero gets an email, Mr. Watt and I are monitoring that. We've added Mrs. Zazinski also to monitor, for example, students with IEPs if there's a concern, who's also monitoring that. So we're in constant contact with those students, those families. The guidance counselor's been fantastic, reaching out to kids and reminding them that they need to log on, don't fall behind because it's just going to be that much more difficult.
Mrs. Carrero's checking with Google Classroom also and she was intended, they have to sign in so that we know they're on. Whether they do their work all day or not, we still have to, we're responsible for their attendance to the state.
We've told, you know, these students, the families, they actually had to sign, read and sign a document called the Remote Learning Guidelines of Expectations. We've gone over those guidelines with the parents and the student. They've signed off on it and one of the items that's on there is that these courses must be completed by December 23rd. That's why we only gave them two. Should they elect, select to remain fully remote, then we will look at that for the second half of the year. We'll obviously have to give them more courses, but we're giving them the opportunity to come back into the building for the second half.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have grandchildren on remotes. I know, especially I cannot do the fifth grade math, math assignment. I have to go back to school. It's very hard. And they're a different program, but the only question is, you mentioned, Ben, is the school responsible for attendance or is the company responsible?
We're still responsible to make sure of the attendance. Yes, that's one of the reasons we have the Google Classroom, so that we can report to the state that they're virtually present. And that's important. So we have a time, so they have to get up. They can now go back to bed and do their work when they want to, but they have to report to that. And we encourage them to maintain the schedule of a school and hope that they stay on during the school day.
And one for, another question, I know the first few months was horrible for the kids and for the adults, especially grandparents. Do you have any idea, like, the percentage of now, how many kids are really doing enough work, you know, they're, how many people are like not doing much or not doing anything at all? Do you get a good idea? Because I know you follow up on it, but I'm hearing from, from that my grandchildren are in, that saw some are doing it. How do they know? How do you know?
It's, there's a dashboard that if I click on students, I'll see the 101 names of every student right next to the student, tells me what courses they've been enrolled in. And it'll tell you, for example, tell us that the student is 26% of the way to completing the course. By today, they should be at 29%. So the student is 3% behind. Or it could also be the reverse. By today, you know, they should be at 29%, they're at 35%. And they'll have a CGA, current grade average, as of today, based on the assignments that have been submitted, corrected, there will be a score, there'll be a grade as of today. So we can monitor whether or not students are on track, are behind, or are significantly behind. There's actually, actually a pie chart.
Also, they get behind a little bit because when they're doing their academics, that's school expectation, they're working the whole time. So they get behind, but they catch up when it's, again, they're doing their vocationals. Okay, any other questions on this item? Yes, good.
Just a little more information for this group. Edgenuity does come at a cost to the school and it is somewhat of a pricey endeavor. And we're working with Pam to find the necessary monies to do so. But it's affecting just about 5% of our population of students, which is lower, a lower percentage than the area of school.
I want to add something, Mr. Bryant, if I can, Mr. Chairman. So just to Mr. Shea's point, there are multiple platforms. There is, Edgenuity is one of the platforms, TECA is the other platform. What I'm hearing from regional principals in the conferences, those districts that chose TECA are experiencing more of the challenges than those districts who had experienced Edgenuity. So I did, now I would also say Edgenuity is the pricier option. So just so that you have all of that information, that may be, I don't, I don't know what program they've all individually chosen, but that is definitely a concern statewide between the different platforms that the department put out there.
Thank you, Mr. Watts. Anybody else? I'm sorry, go ahead, Cindy.
Thank you. Just a question, so could, could teachers use this platform to enhance their own experience with their students or is it either all on this platform or?
We didn't buy into that. It is available.
The staff at this point, because they're teaching remotely and in person at the same time.
The teacher of record for us right now is a teacher that works for Edgenuity. There is that option where they will open up their platform, their curriculum, their courses for us, but we provide the teacher. And like Mr. Watt said, all our shop teachers are presently teaching. So that's one of the reasons why we went with full Edgenuity versus we'll access their platform but still provide teacher. But there is that option.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone want to make a motion to accept item 6D?
Will you accept? Second.
Any questions? All those who accept the 6D to place on file, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. We're going to go on to item 6E, which is the USDA Summertime Program, which will be explained by Mr. Andrew Pam Stewart.
Mr. Chairman, in your packet, you received the letter that was sent out to the families in regards to the USDA SSO program, which stands for Seamless Summer Auction. That program is in regards to the meals that were served to students that were not in the building. As you know, we did not serve meals to any of our students from the day of closure through the summer. When students came back, this program was extended. When students came back, this program was extended to December 31st. After speaking with administration, and the information of the program only be available until the funding was available, which there was no end date. It was, you can get free meals, but if the money runs out, the money runs out, and you have to go back to your normal way of doing business. We decided not to with not knowing the deadline, because it was gonna be mid-September, start to December 31st would be too small of a window. When they extended it at the October 9th date, I believe it was, it was extended now through June 30th. We had a discussion when we came back on that Tuesday after Columbus Day to contact Desi and see how we can now participate in this program since we had not participated from the day one of closure. I spoke with our contact that we have for Desi of the School Nutrition Program. She explained I needed to fill out an application, and that it could only be done at the change of a month, based on the claims that have to get processed. You can't claim National School Lunch Program and halfway through the month switch over to this program. So we had to switch within November 1st date. We were approved for the November 1st date. Our first day of meals free to all students was November 2nd. We also offer remote meals for students that are not in the building. So we've created Google Forms for them to go in and reserve meals, pick up on Tuesday, and pick up on Thursday. Tuesday meal covers two days' worth of meals, two breakfasts, two lunches. Thursday pickup covers three days of meals, three breakfasts and three lunches. So so far, we have had three students on the first Tuesday pickup that reserved meals. On the 5th, the first Thursday, we had seven students, and for today's pickup, there was five students that reserved meals. I'm not sure if that number will increase, or if it will just remain constant, but I'm glad to see that students are taking advantage of the remote meals and having the option to come here to pick them up.
Thank you, Mrs. Stewart.
Thank you.
Any questions, Stewart? Any more questions? Someone make a motion to accept the place on file? Second, aye. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any non-opposed? So move. Go on to 6F, which is the Department of Education letter, which will be explained by Mr. Watt.
We received a letter from the Department of Ed. The Commissioner of Education, Jeffrey Riley, has approved for our Marine Service Technology Program. It is now an official Chapter 74 program. During the application process, we ensure that the program meets the legal standards, meets the needs of the area, and the services that it serves. It also increases students' access to high-quality programs. Right now, we're utilizing the American Boat and Lock Council Curriculum, often known as ADYC. This is a long-awaited program, and we work hard with Rick Quentin, Dee Walker, and is now here doing the night and day. So it's fully approved.
Go ahead.
A little bit. Yes, I know it was in the paper, but I don't know if anybody. So it took a couple of years to get the program. We had to do the, intend to apply the Application A and the Application B process, and we just had the department here that did a safety inspection, and it's a complete go. It was a lot of hard work, but it's the whole reality.
Any, have any questions for Mr. Watt? No. Hearing no questions, someone make a motion to see the place on file, Mr. Watt, before.
Second.
And we have motion and second. Everyone, please signify to accept the motion. One opposed? So move. It's G. Attendance Report, presented by the Superintendent.
Thank you, Chairman. The request of Mr. Tumi last month, we've pulled in on more specific areas with regards to the month of October attendance report. As a result of some of our attendant situations with regards to faculty and staff, as I was going to mention in my Odysseum Report, we've been proactive working with the team of nurses in the lead nurse, first Lecrow, along with Cisco Webette Health and Safety Information Program that I worked with Joanne Romanelli to speak with the faculty and staff on best practices with regards to precautions and necessary steps, both for other students and the staff. Some of the situations within the building where we've had to quarantine some of the staff certainly wasn't because of the square footage size of a vocational program, it's maybe becoming lax during lunch and break time, and congregating with too many people under the social distance guidelines. And I think it was a positive approach to the staff, and I'm gonna, we're gonna work with the principals, along with myself and the nurses team, to keep the faculty and staff informed moving forward. And these are the numbers. I have to teach you, some days, it can be a daunting task for the academy administrators, or the academic department heads, or Zebra Ruder, and the principals to find the appropriate substitute teachers in teaching assistants to fill and try to promote a positive learning experience for our students.
Any questions to the Superintendent on the Attendance Report? Hearing none, all's in favor to accept and place on file the Attendance Report from the Superintendent. Second. All's in favor, please signify. Opposed? Hearing none opposed, so move. To item H, 6H, is the November Odysseums Report, which the Superintendent will also take.
Yeah. It's been a very fun-filled month. Many of you involved in social media, or our local radio stations, and whether it Boston Paper or the Standard Times, these adverse times for all schools, but especially vocational and regional vocational technical high schools with regards to admissions process and the concept of the lottery. And working with the MAVA Group, the Board of Ed, State Board of Education, in last month meeting, present a case with AVTE and PIFR and other civic organizations to take a look into the admissions process. On a positive note, the two Associate Commissioners of Education met in this student forum last spring, Judy Kilkowitz, with our admissions team, and we took the necessary steps and the response to the request from the Department of Ed. There are six highlighted in question vocational schools, and I would say that Grayden Badford Regional Vocational Technical is on the front line of such question. Our admissions team, along with the principals, have worked with Elder Angelo and the Director of Sped and the Director of Guidance to get true, accurate numbers with regards to data, getting the school committee up to speed. I had a conversation with the Associate Commissioner yesterday, she reached out to me in a positive note, and I've had constant conversations with Tom Anderson, and he, quite frankly, would be welcome to be part of the solution. And I know that Liz Bennett, the Associate Commissioner, and her team, in the next few weeks, will be meeting with our team here to look at the appropriate next steps. But I know that the MAVA Group, in the Board, MAVA Board, will be presenting a rebuttal through the Board of Education, and more will follow. Out of your agenda package, Principal Watson will speak on the Desi-approved recommendations for our admissions as it stands right now due to COVID. Also, in the Odysseum Report, we, we are proud of the hard work that we did in our reopening plan. It was a very lofty task putting that package together. We have been committed, even in a red zone, to be hybrid learning, and it's put, it's put us at task to provide the best education possibly vocational, hands-on, look no further than building that beautiful facility outside, the kids in carpentry, plumbing and electrical are enjoying it. But we echo the sentiments of the Governor. We want kids in school, and Principals and myself, with the ESL Coordinator, Elder Angelo, are putting a possible pilot together for bringing out ESL students, and that'll be more to come. Lastly, with regards to the Governor, one of the statistics or numbers he gave last week was out of 450,000 students in the state of Massachusetts, there's been 252 positive tests of the virus. So we still believe that schools are very safe, and the numbers show. We're fortunate that the number of cases have not been a transmission within school part to part. And lastly, I'd like to thank, again, our nurses staff and our faculty and staff in trying to keep this building safe for kids, and we will continue to do the Zoom meetings with the Department of Public Health, MAVA, the Board of Education. And lastly, at 3 o'clock today, I had a Zoom conference call with the South Coast Conference Superintendent Directors, and we've put forward a recommendation that with regards to winter sports, we will hear back from the Principals of the South Coast Conference and the Athletic Directors with a common theme of what their plan is by November 20th. We're like the home, home field advantage, in a sense, with regards to our fieldhouse use with our track program, and Ryan has been working extensively with Zebra Ruder and Principal Watson on a plan, and that plan will be presented to the South Coast Conference Principal, and we'll have more information to follow down the road. I'd like to take the Odysseum Report to the.
As the Superintendent mentioned, the carpentry, plumbing and electrical students have resumed working on the maintenance building. The building now has plumbing and electrical service. Initially, the rough plumbing and electrical plumbing, electrical units have been completed. Students are now focusing on buttoning up the building. The overhead doors have been installed, and the roof was finished today. The exterior doors, windows and siding will be completed shortly. Automotive, collision and diesel departments are up and running. A new disinfectant wand has been purchased to disinfect all vehicles prior to and after they have work, they have live work on them. This will ensure the staff, students and customer safety. The automotive department has recently received their ASE Automotive Service Excellence Certification. The collision department has received nine donated vehicles and assorted parts to ensure the hands-on learning will continue at these trying times. And lastly, the cosmetology students are working, delivering, within the hybrid schedule to prepare for the rigorous state board cosmetology exam for licensed children. That's the technical.
Yeah, a couple of things, and academics, science and social studies departments are reporting in your packets, their work in regards to virtual and remote instruction last month, we heard, math and English. It also included the areas of work that the guidance department is lifting with regards to college bootcamp mentoring, and the stability for homeless foster and military student review paper, as the minute. The only other thing I'd mention to echo the Superintendent's comments is, beginning next Tuesday, the school is bringing all senior students back in for full in-person CVTE instruction as part of our Phase 1B. So both freshmen and senior students in the building. That will not increase substantially the number of kids that take buses, or need lunch supervision, we've modified our lunch supervision, we believe it's a safe first step towards getting towards our Phase 2 and executing what the Commissioner and the Governor have outlined, which is to get kids back into school.
Any questions on that report you just heard? They got a motion to, you could place on file? All's in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Hearing none opposed? One, two. Student Representative, Ethan Mori, which is item 6I.
Hello, how are you? So, a few things. So over the past month and a half, Ms. Fortin and the Student Council have been working together to create a project to raise mental health awareness for students within the school. We have been in contact with the Guidance Department to make sure that our project is successful. So what we have done is we have recruited students from within the Student Council to make videos, to let students know if they're in a difficult time, or if they're stressed, or if they have anxiety, they can reach other people that they can talk to, whether it's guidance, a teacher, us, to let them know that they have someone, and that we work it through, and we can make it okay. So we plan to go ahead with the project with the help of Ms. Alexander in media, and we hope to launch that within the coming weeks. And these videos will be shared through different platforms, a website or the school Instagram account, to make sure that it gets out there. Next, there was a scholarship program that was open to students called BFW, it stands for Veterans of Foreign Wars, and it's a scholarship program. We had one of our fellow sophomores apply, and he won. To congratulate Elijah Gonzo. Next, the class advisors and the class officers are working together to create a Virtual Spirit Week for the students, so much like we had our Spirit Week over the past three years and so on and so forth. We are working to make Virtual Spirit Week online, so that students can show our school spirit and have a little bit of joy that used to come before. They are working with the publicity team and guidance to make sure that we can send it out there and get it off the ground. Lastly, I talked with Mr. Mathier about virtual clubs for students. So he has been at hard work coordinating with club advisors to see who is available to do virtual clubs online through things like Google Meets and Google Classrooms. Students should be able to sign up for clubs next week, and that should be a really fun addition to our school, so that students can get some of that joy again. That's it.
Okay, any questions for Ethan on anything you just spoke?
One good question, but virtual clubs, any ideas, those topics?
So it depends on what can and can't be done online, like, for example, like Student Council has been online for twelve months, like, and it works really well. The only thing is, is for some clubs, it may not work as well, because the experience is not the same. But I can expect things, maybe like, or a mommy club, or.
Gaming club, also.
Gaming club, that, things that won't require you to be as much in person, that don't rely on that in-person, hands-on experience. So it won't be all of the clubs, but it will be to give students access to those.
I know that you have a few on from different school leagues, you know, people saying in and trying to unite, and there's been some really good ideas of doing, but I hope it goes off, I'll be curious to see what takes off on it, because that's a brand-new area, so.
Any other questions for Ethan?
Thank you, Ethan.
Thank you very much, Ethan. And now, someone please make a motion to receive and place on file Ethan's report.
Make a motion.
Riberro, good, second and back. Okay, second. All's in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any opposed? So move. We'll go on to item 7, which is new business. And the first item is item A, 7A, which is to, job description for the school physician. Hey, Pam?
Thank you. The job description for the school district physician needed to be updated, and working with Ms. Crowell, I realized through this pandemic that there were a lot of items that were not accounted for in the original job description. So working with her and what's required now from all of the DPH departments and CDC and everyone else that you can think of, we updated this job description and bringing it forth for approval, since there were many changes from the original, we couldn't just pass it through with just one change, so we wanted your approval. Thank you.
Any questions from anyone? Any questions from anyone?
What's your vote?
Second.
Second. All who are in favor, please signify by saying aye. Are you opposed? Hearing none opposed? You have voted? Description. To item seven B, this policy change for the admissions. Vote to the new mission changes. Mr. Watson?
I'm going to take this for Dr. Locken tonight, although she spearheaded and led the work that was done here. So what's in your packet is the proposed changes to the admissions policy for the year 2021. Obviously, it's been substantially impacted by the COVID pandemic, not only currently, but also last year due to the abrupt closures statewide. This policy was submitted to the Department of Ed so that we could get approval from them. And it's now before you tonight as the statutory board for this district to approve for implementation. I'll highlight just a couple of quick points and then take any questions committee members may have. Some districts did switch to pass fail grades during the COVID closure last spring. So we will not be counting those grades. We have returned to the re-institution of the grade process that was being in place in the fast effect of this school year. But for those students who may have been impacted in the seventh or eighth grade year, as they're coming to vote tech, those grades will not count against them. We've also expanded, at the department's recommendation, and it's probably one of the reasons why they approved, the absence provisions for students who may have been impacted related to COVID for a family member or themselves. Five unexcused absences will be not counted against a student's score. And while discipline and conduct is likely less, given the fact that schools were not in session, if there is an issue serious enough to invoke discipline, the district reserves the right to consider that as part of the student score for the class of 2025. This, as I mentioned, was submitted to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed for approval. We went that direction to get their approval first before bringing it to you folks. That way, you would have that information to decide whether or not you wanted to execute this program.
Any questions?
Which one do you want? It goes till December twenty, twenty thirty, correct? The attendance piece?
Correct.
Now, obviously, it's COVID, COVID, so is there a possibility that might be changes?
Yeah, I think that we'll have to continue to look at that as, as we'll talk a little bit about, I think it's in the report at some point. I've seen it in my desk the last couple of days. There are about 400, almost 400 applicants that have already begun to submit paperwork to the district. So that is going to have to be something that we continue to monitor, right? As applications roll into January, February, we're obviously going to need to be cognizant of COVID-related absences that would impact students' admission here. I think we all agree that that should not be a reason that a student is denied access to a regional vocational high school. So what has been past practice is by the end of the year, we see a large share of the number of students who've already applied. This year's going to look different, right? The open house, and there's a number of things that are going to be impacted as a result of this pandemic. And so we will have to take a look at that, Mrs. Barrow, as we move into January.
Anyone else? Hearing none, can I get an approval to?
Make a motion to approve.
Any other questions? All who are in favor, please signify by saying aye. Me here, I'm not approved. Hearing none, so move. Going on to item seven C. Bullying and intervention. Start clean. Mr. Watson, can you take this?
Chip again. So again, Dr. Locken spearheaded this issue with a lot of work from committee members outlined in that packet. What you see before you is the plan, the bullying prevention intervention plan that will, and your approval will be implemented by the district as a result of the law passed in April of 2014, which helped with bullying at the state level. So in this plan, I think Heather did a nice job of coagulating pieces from many different parts of the school, which addresses not only the public, the planning and supervision issues, but also the training, professional development, access to services, so on and so forth, that would be required for the district to intervene in the event of bullying.
Okay, any questions on that? Hearing none, can I get a motion to accept? I can devote to. So move. Second. In a second. All who are in favor, please signify by saying aye. You're approved. So move. Item seventy. I'm going to turn this over to our chairman of the Superintendent's Search Committee.
Okay, at this time, I'd just like everybody to know, we opened up applications for Superintendent's Search at the deadline of October thirteenth for a primary. At that time, we found that there was insufficient qualified people applying, so we extended the search to an outside search and extended it to October thirty. At that time, we received a total of eleven applications. After members of the subcommittee reviewed the subcommittee, we interviewed eight of the eleven candidates that we felt were qualified. And now, tonight, we will submit the names of the three finalists that we feel are the most qualified. So we will do our final interview with the entire school committee. And a big day to be determined. The names of the three people are as follows. Dr. Susan Sylvia. Mr. Michael Watson. Mr. Wally Williams.
Okay, any questions from anyone? I want to place on file. Do you have a motion to accept and place on file the chairman's report, subcommittee? Seconded by. All who are in favor, please signify by saying aye. Okay, I will handle. I don't know what it is. And now, we have to establish a time in place for the most, maybe all, to do the final interviews for the three finalists. We're thinking about a Saturday, ten o'clock in the morning. And I'd like to propose as for a suggestion, possibly November the twenty-first, ten o'clock. Is there anyone that has a problem with that? I'll see, speaking to the people who weren't on the subcommittee, I guess. Dr. Marlon? Okay, Mr. Olivera? Tony Walsh? Hey, I guess we're in agreement then. It'll be ten o'clock, Saturday morning, the twenty-first of November. We're going to notify the time list.
And they're going to send a note to, will be sent to the whole committee so they'll know.
Yes, we will be sending, we'll give the school committee a packet. We will be notifying candidates of, in a specific times to appear and location, which will probably be right here in the heat of. We will have proper spacing. You know, all the COVID-19 rules and regulations. Everybody will have an opportunity to look at questions, pose questions, and you know, review the resumes and the reports of the three finalists.
So the public knows that it will be a live interview here.
In public session.
Public session, which will be Zoomed. The whole session will be on Zoom. Three times, everything, we get it out.
It might be, I want to check. Maciel will be YouTube.
Yeah, it'll be on YouTube.
It is YouTube Live.
It'll be live on YouTube.
Live on YouTube.
We will send the link.
All three of the interviews, the whole process. And once we put it up, the time, it might be able, you know, that our people know that, not just in school, people who are know all of that. Thank you, dear, on that. Good job.
Thank you very much. And at this time, I just want to make comment of what a fantastic job of Mr. Toomey did. With his timeline with everybody, getting everyone in on time, the interviews on time. We figured a lot of people for this position. Everything went off like cotton, Toomey did. And also Mrs. Spadetza. Moving right along. Item nine, which is a mini, no, it's Communications. Oh, communications, the only item is one, which was the letter from the town of Fairhaven, giving me reappointment for another four years. You guys have stuck with me for a while.
We'll take you in.
Now we get to line communications. Sorry, committee discussion. Discussions. Hearing none, item ten, any other business that come before the school board. Nothing there. We will go to item eleven, which is to go to executive session under Chapter Thirty, Section Twenty-One. We will discuss the issues with the teachers union. You will not be coming back. Item. Well, what's this? All right, what's that roll call?
Yes.
Paul? Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Olivera? Ms. Barrow? Paul Allen? Oregon?
Yes.
Okay, so it's, it's, item twelve, which is the chairman. Seconded by. Second. Any questions on that? All who are in favor, please signify by saying aye. All who are in favor, please.